Welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, December twelfth. It is seven o'clock. We are at Lee Middleland High School Library. And we are continuing to be in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's for suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Dental Law C thirty A, Section twenty. This meeting will take place in a hybrid fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access it either. I am calling this meeting to order pursuant to mass Dental Law C thirty A, Section twenty. You're by informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. Please join me and I think, yep. Yep, we're going, no? Is it just you, Joey? It's just Joey, it's just Sally Martin. Joey Martin, I don't believe it, I don't believe it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand this one edition under God, in the bosom of the Lord, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up, our mission statement. The mission statement of the public schools is to ensure students have the opportunity to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, could you do a roll call for us, please? Mr. Robyn?
Yeah.
Ms. Cooper here. Ms. Fisher, here. Mr. Langman. Ms. Larmen, here. Mr. Nichols?
Here.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yeah.
Thank you, Brenda. Next up, we have the approval of the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three in the school committee meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Motion, November, what was it? Fourteen, twenty twenty-three. Second.
I'm second.
Any discussion? There are none. Brenda could do a roll call for us, please. Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langman?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Same.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right, next up, public input.
Public input. Residents of Lee are invited to address the committee regarding items on this evening's agenda at this time. These two phrases will normally be referred to administration or a subcommittee of the school.
Motion. Nobody has? Next up, we have our student presentation from LMA to us.
I'd like to introduce Emily Foley in. She's going to speak to us about the bowling team.
Yes, please.
Okay, so hi, I'm Emily. Case Ramon, I am a bowler from this area. And I have been on the Lee Elementary School bowling team since seventh grade. And I've done with Mr. Filio since I was around nine years old. He's a great, I mean, a great person to be around and him coaching the bowling team is really a good thing for everyone around and I hope he wants to run this community. I mean, get together and become like family because I feel like family now that I'm a captain. I feel like I get to be on the model team too. And it's just, it's a great way to just, you know, be around everybody and what you love. And I love bowling. Um, I mean, I've done it since I was around nine years old and it's just a sport that I really love getting into. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing to do. Oh, um, I recently committed to Belmont Avenue College in North Carolina. I'm a D-two recruit for the sport. And I practice around four days a week. And I have meetings with Coach Filio and really get in-depth with the sport and be able to just be really bonded. And I think it's just a really good program happening in here. And I think it should become very big. And I hope it does. So, that's my input.
Don't go anywhere yet. You'll stay right there. I think it's important to say thank you for having me come. One of the saddest things, I think, is when our bowling lanes suddenly shut down. I think it was just the whole, but always.
Oh, yeah.
The one in Pittsville still opens and sort of.
No, so Penn's closed, but they obviously, but I knew bowling alley is strengthened. It's called K and M and they're also, the owners are very good people.
Oh, good. So we have Pittsville now and.
Yes.
Okay, all right, good. Because we have very few places for kids to go now, like. I mean, kids that are dating and you know, it would be a grown well. Thank you very much. Um, anybody have any questions?
I think it's great. My son is excited about bowling. I think bowling is weird that. Those whole teams want to get to the team that I. Well, something fun to do.
Even getting him to just watch the high school games is a good way to learn just like how to like bond with each other and even just to bowl, even better. So they really just put a perspective on it.
Very younger, like, did you say if you started at nine? We're playing in the number league somewhere because I have one down the league in Matt's brand, but we don't have one anymore.
Have that league going on on Saturday mornings, nine-thirtieth code.
Okay.
I recently left because the bowling homes are just not my favorite house, I would say, but I mean, I just keep on doing so.
How many students? A lot?
There's a lot. From the high school team, we have two JV teams and a varsity.
Oh, wow.
So we get to bowl like every team once. That's how big it is this year. It's been a little bit popular. It's just going to bring you.
So it's not much of a, it's not a team, it's a little bit.
Oh, yes. There's also the same thing at K and M on Sunday mornings. Yes.
Congratulations and good luck in college.
All right. Um, next up, we're going to have.
Why don't we have Annie go and then Shannon go?
For sure. Yeah, I'm hearing, um, so the student government is currently working on a meaningful initiative. Um, fundraising for the land acknowledging, as we all know, and this is going to have a reflect on commitment to recognizing and honoring the indigenous people whose ancestral lands the school occupies on. The fundraising efforts are geared towards creating a physical representation as a class. And then we're hoping that we could finish the fundraising within this month. Um, in addition to the land volunteer, student government is also actively preparing for the intermission day or love to learn about. Um, that took place last year. Um, and this initiative seeks to provide a break from the routine, offering students a chance to engage in activities that foster a love for learning and opportunity to discover careers within our communities. Uh, meanwhile, various other clubs within our schools are also gearing up for new events aimed at raising awareness and funds for different causes, pauses. Looking around the hallways, um, you would see the historical figures um, within the LGBTQ community hung out there. Um, this is one of the few ways that our GSA club has spread awareness. Um, and this ultimately should consist that the diverse interest and passion of the student body contributing to a vibrant school community. The annual Quiz Team TV match took place earlier this month. Um, it was the first Saturday, if I remember correctly. And this exciting competition involves student teams of students competing in a televised quiz testing their knowledge across the broad spectrum of subjects. The Quiz Team TV match not only provides a platform for academic excellence, but also fosters a sense of healthy competition among our school participants. And then the recent concert by the school chorus and band was a success. Um, as a musician myself and a person who participated, uh, we were approached by many satisfied students, parents, teachers, and other audiences and a great demonstration of our hard work that we put in. On the sports front, um, the excitement is building in the building as the first games are kicking off. This week, um, the school community is eagerly participating, anticipating the competitive spirit and team spirit that the sport events bring, fostering a sense of unity, guide among students in the community. The classes of twenty fourteen and twenty twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six are actively engaging in fundraising initiatives. Um, the class of twenty twenty-four is selling chocolates during lunch hours on combining sweetness of treats as the time of Christmas is approaching. The class of twenty twenty-six is also enthusiastically organizing various fundraisers. And upcoming event is the movie night on Friday, December fifteenth. That's all I have for my.
So I don't know if you guys know, but Annie's waiting to hear and like people gave her that. Good evening. Very much, look, Annie, thank you so much. And hopefully have a good year, but yes.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to duck out.
Debbie, you are welcome.
Yeah, actually, I'll stay because, you know, I have to get my line off.
The boring part of it will distract her. Yes, yes. Okay, uh, so next, we're going to take our, our agenda out of order and we're going to talk about our community eligibility provision mid-year agreement document. I don't know what you explained.
That's good. Thank you. Uh, thanks. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to introduce to the committee tonight Shannon Gagliardo. Uh, Shannon is our shared food service director with the Lennox Public Schools. And so I thought it was a nice opportunity. You approved, uh, the CEP status for LMHS not too long ago. And, uh, and before you tonight is the provision seeking your approval to also name LES as a community eligible provisioned school. Uh, but I'm going to let Shannon talk just for a minute, if it's okay, about, uh, about the process, uh, the purpose, uh, and next steps for, for all of us. So Shannon.
Um, so forty percent was the eligibility before, so free and reduced students. And they just changed that to twenty-five percent and asked that everybody apply if you were twenty-five or above. Uh, and so LES was thirty-eight percent. And so we are right on that cusp and we do qualify. It won't change much. Um, it's just the way we're funded. And so the federal government will now put a larger portion of the bill than the state government, um, allowing these universal meals to continue for the state. And that's why they're having a lot of schools join onto this. I don't know if anybody has any questions about it or doesn't change like the way, you know, students still get free meals and everything.
That percentage refers to the, uh, what was formerly known as low income, uh, for, for families. Uh, and that was the triggering threshold, dropped down to twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so we get the numbers. It's, you know, if you are eligible for SNAP, Medicare, Medicaid, um, you know, just different government programs, we get the numbers from that. So if there was not universal meals, financially, it would not make sense because then the school has to foot that remainder of the bill. Um, it only makes sense being that the universal meal stay. And you can opt out. So if that were to ever change, you can opt out of CEP at any time. Um, and financially, we would probably go back. I mean, of course, it would be a conversation at that point and see where the numbers are. Um, but if you're only at thirty-eight percent, somebody now has to foot the rest of that, which is where the state is coming in with that additional funding.
Any other questions?
Postive designate Lee Elementary School as a community eligible provision.
Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langman?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Is every needy thing?
If I could ask some of the committee members as you're speaking to, um, speak a little more loudly, that would be really great. It's hard to hear those of you on the far end.
Ms. Larmen.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got superintendent's update. Mike, yell louder.
I will do that for sure.
I can hear Mike.
He's right next to the owl down near them.
Strategically placed. Uh, so I'm going to just share my screen. Kick into slideshow mode. Uh, I will admit that I was, um, a bit pared down, uh, this month, partially because of the number of, of policies that are ahead of us and wanted to be respectful of everybody's time. But, uh, quick enrollment update, uh, you'll see where it's six hundred and twenty-eight students. Uh, unfortunately, that number has been a little bit on the decline, uh, this year. But again, as I've mentioned to you, each month, uh, we are not alone in that predicament across the, across the county. Uh, but, uh, we continue to, uh, try to think about ways, uh, to make, uh, the Lee Public Schools attractive, especially for school choice. Uh, we, I had a meeting yesterday with, um, Chris Britton, uh, the town administrator, and Sue Kelly, the new chair of the finance, uh, the town's finance committee. And we did talk about, uh, some townwide, uh, strategies, uh, that may be able to be implemented to try to make housing more affordable in town, to maybe attract some, some additional families with school-aged children, uh, so that we can bolster enrollment. Uh, again, that exploration is regular and ongoing. Uh, math learning labs are happening, uh, next week, Monday to Wednesday at Lee Elementary School. Uh, we have a consultant from Mount Holyoke College coming in, Jen Hawkins. Uh, Jen has been working with us and, uh, other Mount Holyoke faculty, including Mariah Carrington. Uh, and we are also partnering with our STEM learning design consultants as part of that math implementation continuation grant. Uh, so there's a planning meeting for the work that's going to happen on Tuesday and Wednesday. That'll happen on Monday. And then we'll have, uh, demonstrations and pilots on Tuesday in grades three and, uh, the same type of programming in grade four. And the idea here is that, um, Jen Hawkins is going to model a lesson at the beginning of the day. Uh, our staff will observe her, uh, modeling that lesson. It will be based on, uh, targets that they will set as a team on Monday. Uh, following her, uh, modeling of the lesson, the team will come back together. They'll offer constructive feedback on what worked, what didn't work, and what changes can be made. And then afterwards, our faculty will teach the same lesson to different groups of students and they'll continue to, uh, work back and forth to make adjustments as appropriate so that the lesson gets incrementally better. Uh, so that'll happen in grade three on Tuesday, grade four on Wednesday. And then we've got, uh, as you can see at the bottom of that slide, uh, other sessions for the remaining grades, uh, at LES on January twenty-ninth through thirty-first and February twenty-eighth to March first. So this is really an, an exciting opportunity for our teachers, um, to get real excellent professional development, um, with our students so that we can, we can really see what the effect of that PD is on performance. Uh, book study, I emailed all of you to say we're postponing that for just a little bit. Um, the, the holidays came up quickly on people and we're also just trying to increase participation. So we're going to push this off to January. So anybody who's watching at home or checks out this recording at any point, please feel free to reach out to Brenda and let us know if you're interested. Uh, we would love to get a good, healthy group of people, uh, participating in the book study of Outcasts United. I tried to keep it brief tonight. It's actually probably half the time that Annie spent. So I've, Annie, I appreciate what you did. But happy to answer any questions that committee members may have.
All right. Moving on to principals and directors, we're going to start. We have been heard from the elementary school.
Uh, county-wide PD took place last month. At LES, we hosted several faculty members to take advantage of some PD that we put on for ELA, HMH into reading and literature. We created a very professional learning community that day and a lot of cross-grade activity that that particular day allowed. Uh, students in the faculty also took a DCP survey last month. Uh, this was similar to the one that was done last March. This year, we did extend it to some of the lower grades, in grades one and two. Uh, this gives us a snapshot, uh, into, you know, what their thoughts are, uh, in academics as well as social, emotional. There's also a faculty component for this as well. Uh, we did some math walkthroughs, um, uh, eleven fifteen with Jay Foster for some of our H two IM, um, PD, that's what we're doing, uh, across the two buildings. Uh, we had served several math classes in each grade as well as interviewing students across several grades to get another snapshot into how we're doing with HMH and some math. Our last walk to school took place, uh, December sixth, uh, was a great one. We had about eighty students participate. Next one will be in March. Uh, progress reports were sent home on December first for grades three to six. So the next round will go out January fifth. Uh, and we will also be piloting HMH into science in grades three and five in January and February. We've also received materials for grades K one, two, and four to want to take a close look at. Uh, we're scheduled, as Superintendent Sherd said, to do our first, uh, learning math lab next week. Pretty excited about that. Uh, the third and fourth grade, uh, teachers, I'm in communication with, um, the group that's coming in as well as me and grades K one, two, and five, and six. Uh, we'll have their terms over the next couple of months, uh, Superintendent Sherd alluded to, and we're really looking forward to that PD. It's the first time in over twenty-three years that I've seen PD like this degree, you know, happen during the school day.
Just wondering if the data from those students, like, can be, can be, like, shared in some way sometime or not?
I can certainly give, uh, I'm sorry, I, I, yeah, I can, uh, share the link, uh, with access to the survey. It is right now, uh, password protected and I, so I would ask, uh, committee members to, um, respect that right now, but I can certainly share that information with you.
Up next, we have Greg Ragnetti with Lee Elementary.
Um, as Annie stated, the LMHS bands and choruses had an excellent concert last week. Um, in nighttime here, I've never heard the high school band sound better than it did. Um, Corey Chen used to be noted as doing amazing solo, um, performance and one of the pieces was amazing. Uh, so congratulations to all those performers as well as the director. Um, Annie also mentioned a movie night sponsored by the class of twenty twenty-six coming up soon. Actually, this Friday night, it's open to all members of the whole greater community who'd like to come. Health is shown at six, followed by Home Alone at Leet. Uh, people can come to one or both. Um, there's no admission charge, but donations will be accepted and refreshments will be sold outside the airport. Next Friday afternoon, December twenty-second. Not only does vacation begin, but at the same time, we're sending home monthly interim grade reports. Um, that they publish, email to our parents and students that afternoon. This is the final interim grade report for first semester. The January report card is the official semester report. Um, I think everybody's looking forward to vacation. Um, I hope to have the program studies for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year ready for Google at January meeting. We hope to, um, start the scheduling process earlier this year, um, so that we can hopefully get student schedules for the new year before the end of this year. Um, and lastly, auditions for the spring musical, which is going to be Mean Girls, will be held on January third and fourth after our return for break. And performances are scheduled for March eighth.
Um, I don't have a lot to share this month. I do want to say that the grant that we applied for, for the new IDP project, um, was, um, approved. Probably faster than any other grant I've seen. I think it took about twelve minutes and we had it approved. So, um, that is covering a series of six trainings for the entire special education staff. And it's also going to allow us to, um, which we've already done, have some of our staff be, uh, trained to be trainers. And, um, we will be able to have the collaborative education services come in, um, in our early PD days next year to do some, uh, PD with the general education staff as well. So it's, it's been a great, um, addition to, um, all of the requirements. I'm still waiting to find out exactly when our special education, uh, program, we use frontline, we sped to a frontline, um, and we haven't quite gotten the answers that we were hoping for just yet. Um, our budget process, um, we've just started that. We're working on that as an advent team, so we're looking at that. Um, and I think we still have some openings, which, um, I know everyone is still in that same boat, but I strongly suggest if anyone is looking to work, even if they just want to, um, sub, that would be great. We always need people. Um, and it's been kind of that cold and flu season that's coming up fast and hard. So that's where we are right now.
All right, and last we have. Bernard Meyer with facility.
Good evening. Uh, not much, uh, on my end, we have the PLO developed for participation of new door pad control system, if you remember last, uh, committee, but, um, those are forthcoming issues. We haven't noticed that with install in twenty weeks. Uh, outside of LES, we have the bump outs cleaned. We have the windows done, we have the sills done, the walls, the ground. Uh, and there was also a spot on the roof that had some bleed over from roof materials, some organic materials. Uh, the same company that they were getting up there and started the power wash that pulled off. Um, it was a valve that fell in the cafeteria at LES, one of our heating units in the wall that was repaired. Uh, it's not a big cost, but it did make a difference in the area. The gym floors at LES are scheduled for Christmas break to have them cleaned. The LMHS, uh, floors are going to be cleaned before we start the basketball season. We're investigating some areas and all around the school related to the EMS. Um, trying to get adjustments done at LES to balance building, uh, more to the light of the occupants. Uh, we'll be transitioning down there to HS. Probably over the next break, we'll start kicking off the place down here. And again, balancing the stakes a little bit of time, uh, but overall, it'll be a good improvement. Um, I'm going to be purchasing door closures within the audit of, of the school doors. Um, there's a few that take frequent adjustments, uh, to make sure that they're still securing, uh, pressures, one direction. All of that plays a role, uh, what doors or windows are open and how the door pushing and work. Uh, so we identified about six of them in these places. They are rather expensive. Um, they're several hundred bucks a piece, but they're, they're needed because they're just, we can't keep up with constantly adjusting and, and, you know, too many security reports. Um, the changes, there are no changes to our vehicles that are in queue. Um, the albatross of our DPW truck failed on its first measure. Uh, we put it out, just to stall, not flat. Um, it did blow it, it was ready to line, which fortunately our team is able to purchase and install. So there's, it's not a big deal, but it shows how fragile that vehicle is. Um, all cold weather precautions have been taken, uh, we'll maintain and monitor, uh, materials and equipment as well. The Swift family behind LES reached out to us for assistance in having a shed delivered to their home while they are away on vacation, which is before climbing, uh, for them. So they reached out for help. We assisted. We delivered their shed through our property. We're friends, it's like good neighbors. They were happy and made that everybody involved. And I think the whole has been.
All right. Next up, we have committee reports. So that is.
Yes, me. So we met, uh, prior to this meeting, um, discussed this month's warrants. Um, and the first warrant up is a challenge pay of. What's the judge?
So in the past month, we had two, uh, warrants totaling three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and thirteen cents. The first warrant was for two hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred, thirty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. And that was comprised primarily of CTC due for and Hillcrest. And the second warrant totaled one hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty cents and was comprised primarily of converge one, due for, and Gateway's regional school district.
Thank you. And after much discussion, uh, we did vote to approve this, uh, warrant.
I will entertain a motion to, um, approve the warrant. I will entertain a motion to approve the warrant.
I move to approve the warrant of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and thirteen cents.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Brenda can do a call. Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Wayne?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
And the next warrant was payroll. Mr. Jess.
The two warrants, pay warrants for the past month totaled six hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighteen cents.
Again, the subcommittee did vote to approve this.
I entertain a motion for the warrant.
I, here it is then. I make a motion to exempt the total payroll warrants amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirteen cents.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Brenda, can you do a roll call please?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Obstinate.
And Ms. Strickland?
Obstinate.
All right. Next up, we have old business. First thing on our list is our L S school improvement plan. Hold on, this is last month. We have some changes that were going to be made.
We made some changes based on recommendations I can add. We also had a two-hour school council meeting where we reviewed everything and I shared. You know, what was brought up here. We made some specific measurable outcome changes as well as added something in communication in terms of, you know, recommending a regular communication to the staff and individuals, families about student performance and wellness. It's up to the committee. Would you like me to review again the document or would you like me to just answer any questions that you might have?
I'm gonna let the two people that asked for the changes, would you like the changes to be discussed or would you like to just? If you think the entire thing about? Go back to the changes.
I got it. Obviously, there's the changes, the changes.
Absolutely. So in terms of some of the specifics around M C A S, we've put some specific numbers in there, like moving ten percent for partially meeting expectations to meeting five percent for meeting expectations to exceeding expectations. When talking about progress monitoring of students, we put a number there, like fifty percent more students were progress monitored who are not on education plans. There was a question about communication. We added regular communication between staff and individual families about student performance and wellness, which in terms of measurable outcome will be increased direct to a communication between school and home. And then the end of year outcome, students and families will be fully apprised of student performance on an ongoing basis. So as to improve academic and social emotional progress. I think that was it really, just making the specific measurable outcomes as well as adding that piece to the communication.
If I, if I could, we also removed a few items that we found to be redundant and, and almost impossible to measure. So I appreciate the feedback that we got from committee members on this. I think it was a very good exercise for, for us to go through to review it. I do feel, I feel very confident that this plan as written will work to meet the needs of students at L S for this coming year and obviously is subject to adjustment accordingly as, as needed. And I would suggest that probably for both schools, I'd like to be able to give the committee an update in, in February as to how we're doing with progress on both plans.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve that L S school improvement plan. I'll second you. Any further questions?
I guess, just real quick, I wanted to hear last, also as part of the conversation. But in respect to the N C A S course, I think my opinion and my position on the N C A S testing might be well known on this committee. That I don't believe in, rephrase that. It's not this, it's not the best way for us to, to measure the success, the academic success of our school and of our students. So Tim, if we don't meet the goals there, I know that your staff can only possibly can deliver a quality and exceptional education to our kids. So if we don't push ten percent up, that's fine by me. I'm, I'm okay with that. I know that our teachers and our support staff can only possibly can. And down here as well, Greg, it was me too. So if those scores don't go up, I'm fine. I'm happy. So I know if we're doing a good job educating our kids. I appreciate all the hard work everyone does. I do not believe in any of that.
Uh, anybody else?
Yeah, just with that, there's a lot more that's in the school improvement plan that I think is important. Yeah, I do look forward to hearing the updates and I do value what I think is important. And we need to have some way to hold ourselves and our teachers and our students accountable. And you know, we're all growing and we're all learning and that, that's what I'm looking for.
Anybody else?
Andrew, if I could, so to the point that Mr. Nichols made about meeting targets, I will say that Tim and I, when, when discussing setting some of these targets, purposely set them high with that sort of approach, which is, you know what, if we fall short, at least we've set the bar and we've made progress versus setting a target that might be easily achieved. And what is that saying about us, right? If we set the bar low, then that's the bar we're shooting for. We set the bar high, then that's the bar that we're, we're attempting to reach. So we're hopeful that we'll be successful, but if not, we're giving it everything we can.
Any further discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call please?
Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Wayne?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have our L S and L M H S student handbook update, which is the cell phone document. Which I think we made a couple of changes to from the first time.
In the, in the original handbook updates, we had changes.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. This proposal reflects, at least for me, a very major kind of about face and change in thinking. I'd always been of the mindset that we can have restrictions on cell phone use during the school day. Still allow it in some cases where appropriate. And educate the whole school community about proper use and safety of those devices. This particular school year, we've seen a large increase in what I'm going to just call inappropriate use of cell phones, whether it's harassing behavior, whether it's cheating, whether it's just the distraction factor involved with cell phones and earbuds smart latches and everything else connected. So that is where this proposal comes from, as well as, you know, talking with my colleagues both around the county and larger than that, and reading current thoughts on what's going on in the schools. This proposal would ban cell phones from being seen or heard during the school day entirely. In this building, that would be from our first bell at seven fifty-eight until the last bell at two thirty. Very few exceptions, only really two that are part of this policy. Students who have a documented medical condition where a medical device needs to communicate with their cellphone. And also some E L students who are identified by the E S O teacher as regarding is requiring the assistance of an immediate translation device. Typically, that's E L students who are new to the building, new to the program. And that figures out both of those exceptions would require a contract developed between the principal, the student, and parents. And that agreement would include provisions related to the consequences of the, of the violation. In general, we would have, I hate this term, of zero tolerance, but in, in general, that's what this would be. The first time a student has the phone out seen or heard, it would be capacitated, turned into the office. We hold it till the end of the day, returning to the student. Second and subsequent times, it would be held until the parent picks up the phone. I do think that this has the potential to make some very positive changes during the school day in terms of student attention span, focus, socialization even. And I think all of those are very bad for sure. It may be a rough ride the first couple of weeks. Talking with my colleagues who rolled out similar plans, this beginning of the school year, the first week or so was tough. And, but their experience has kind of echoed what we've seen in national press stories, which say that after a month or two, even students who resisted the policy at the beginning have positive things to say about their student experience without distraction and and other part, and others side effects of cell phones in other areas. So that's kind of the background here. And I will put this forward with you. In, in this building, I did bring this to the student government. We have a lively discussion with the student government. I also brought it to my parent group, which is kind of a small version of the school council as we try to build out a faculty board. And the parent group was unanimously in favor of this. We had some great discussion there as well, and that's actually where the change with the E L students came from. And the faculty, we've had conversations as well in the building. Almost every faculty member has been supportive. I just want to provide a feedback to me who's been supportive of this. Really, I had one that was not in favor of it. So I think we have, if this proposal passes, like I said, a challenging week or two perhaps, particularly at lunchtime. I think that'll be the most interesting time. And but I think long term, long short term, this could provide some great, uh, great benefits for our student body and schools.
Oh, I think it's covered under, yeah, I think it's covered under here and the teachers and the principals are very good about that. So I don't see a gauge.
Well, with technology, yes.
Want to approve the L S and the L M H S student handbook update for cell phones.
Any discussion?
I just have a question about lunch. I, I actually don't, I don't really, I don't even know why. My students didn't get it till eight great, so they were a lucky one. Lunchtime, I just have, you just feel like if you don't do full blown, like.
What we've experienced over the last several years, as we've gone through slight changes and tightening of the cell phone rules is wherever there is out, it kind of leaks and grows bigger and bigger and bigger as time goes on. And so our feeling was that the best thing to do is just say during these six hours, six and a half hours from eight o'clock until two thirty. For sake of everybody, the best thing to do is just not having to do that. So remember, every student does have a phone book. So there are still ways that communication with phone could happen. We still have the office.
Like I realize you can call the office. I'm gonna say it like I probably, you know, high school campus. Like I realize you can call the office, but when you're very dependent now, I have been used to being able to quickly text your child and say, your grandmother's picking you up today. You know, I mean, I don't need to call the office to do that in that lunchtime. You're putting up to me. But yeah.
Yeah, and we had those conversations, but the feeling was, and what we've seen in the past, you give that little bit everywhere and it just somehow grows and grows and grows. It becomes well, in the bathroom, after lunch.
I get it. I know, but it's not everyone.
No, you're absolutely. But I think the key word you used there at the beginning was dependence.
Right, no, I know, yeah. But we're all dependent. I mean, we have to learn. I mean, it's a way of world. College and jobs, you know.
So we're not the first, we will not be the first school district in the county to go this route. There have been a couple others to start of this year, certainly not. Many reports across the country, it's a growing trend with the dark side of these devices is starting to show a place more and more. And there's entire countries in Europe that have been in doing the school day, France, for example. Going out in their own schools and that kind of country. And I can put good reason. I, I do understand that. I do understand.
I know, it sounds silly, but to.
No, you're used to that. You used to be able to just.
Right.
I'm gonna say devil's advocate on the other side, but I'm doing a, doing a bit of a policy. Do you have a plan for what we're going to do to keep these people feeling important policy and do this as a way to initiate and what themselves to do?
Yes. Back of the, back of the team staff are expected to follow the handbook rules. And well, if this passes to me, we happen to have a faculty meeting tomorrow after school, maybe even that conversation about how we're gonna implement this and expectations for, back with staff, including model and behavior, by the way. So that's, that's all.
Could I ask a question? Go ahead. And apologies, because I couldn't hear what that last round of comments was, but I'm just wondering, Greg, sort of two-part question. If you can talk about your own process in coming to this decision. And then also, I know of at least one school in Berkshire County, as you mentioned, there are others. But what were the processes of the other schools or districts in getting to the hundred percent ban? One school I'm thinking of, I think Wakona had like a one semester or a one year sort of phase in. And then it was the ultimate ban. So I'm just wondering if you can talk again, your own process and then that of your colleagues that you are aware of.
Yeah, I think most of them actually kind of follow the same pattern that we've seen here, which is ever increasing attempts to tighten, control and restrict use of cell phones over time. Attempts to tighten uh control and restrict use of cell phones over time. Um, personally here, if we go back, well, I could go back ten years and there were no rules, right, uh, because of this. When you had to hit the button three times to get a letter, it wasn't so much of a uh of an issue, but um. We have gone from essentially no rules and we've tried various things and we tightened over the years. Um, our current rules here are during, at at the high school level, um. During class time, there should be no phones seen or heard unless the teacher has explicitly given. Permission for some educational purpose. Um, at the middle school level currently, they are not supposed to be seen or heard at all. Um, except for during lunch. Um, so we've, I think our process has been one of tightening over time as we've seen. The bad side effects of uh the use of these devices. And again, it's not just cell phones, it's the other associated devices as well. Earbuds are the biggest one right now and um, you know, students have. A lot of students will have one earbud in one ear and claim they're paying attention and listening outside, but we all know that that. Really doesn't work um for most students. I think there's a few who can who can function that way, but for most, it's very difficult, I certainly can't do that. Um, so other schools have followed a similar path where they tightened over time. Um, you're right, Wakona did try, basically last year, they had a rule, basically our current rule. And we have the same exact um hanging things in each classroom where students can put their cell phones if they. If they choose to and things like that, so. In all schools, it seems to have been a gradual move toward this and process of. A total ban during the school day. Um, a couple of the schools in Berkshire County have gone the Yonder pouch route. Um, which is where every student gets a pouch release um from a company called Yonder and. Students put their phones in there and it locks, it's got a magnetic lock during the school day and right before last bell. There's a magnetic lock to unlock it and take it with your phone out. Um. Some of the issues seen with that one are are price and ongoing cost, financial cost to that, but also. The fact that you can go on Amazon right now and order the magnet that um unlocks the Yonder pouches, which basically makes it useless. Um, so I've heard horror stories of um lines in bathrooms with the. Meeting it up to uh meet up with the kids who have the the magnets that are locked without you, so. Um, but to summarize, I think everybody follows kind of the same path so far, which is a gradual tightening and restriction. Um, and then at the end, um, moves toward this. I know other schools in the county are also having this conversation um for the future for um moving to a total ban as well.
Thank you. I was also wondering if I can jump in if we could get some feedback from Annie on the student government conversation.
Oh, um, I'd be honored to know. So from what I've heard from like now students are outside of. Shandarum, um, you know, the first reactions were, you know, kind of somewhat negative towards it. Because of course, um, as teenagers, um, we have high reliance on devices, including myself. I would say that I'm pretty much of a good, um, I would also, you know, put on headphones, like you said, on earbuds and. During classes, um, and that definitely, you know, um, somewhat is affecting our lives, um. And um, Shandarum, like my other L P R, they've also seen this issue arise in our schools and especially in our classrooms. Where um teachers are talking and then the students are on their phones, um, regardless of how many times the teacher has worn them. And has taken a lot of, go find some ways to escape that. And so, um, and all in all, um, Mr. Andarama fully supports, um, Mr. Bregenti and his proposals. Um, yeah, that's all I have, and if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Question, um, like, so is the teacher, what, just the contention of having them for me, then you just. Um, that process of having to bring it to the office?
Yeah, many, because right now we have a similar thing where in class they can be confiscated if they use.
Yeah.
I would say that the vast majority of students hand over the phone without argument right now. Um, and what we've told the teachers is we don't want you to get into a battle in class time, we won't watch it. If you ask for it and the student refuses, sends the office a message. Um, somehow, and we will catch up with the student and we will clear it up and off. Even those who refuse to give it to the teacher, ninety-nine percent of those end up handing it over to the students or me. Historically, so, um, there's, I think, a very small number who will make it, you know, a a bigger issue and. You know, what to deal with that, depends on how does we need to.
I just wanted to point out that I appreciate and the positive, um, I know we're focused a lot on the middle and high school. But that is consistent and will be the same, but I think that'll be a huge help once we get this up and rolling. Um, to have the same at L E S, at LMHS.
I agree.
And anyone, I don't have a high schooler yet, but I can I can understand the dependency bar, and my daughter also is in sixth grade and does not have a phone.
Right.
Um, but we we, it is a problem at our elementary too. I mean, sixth grade in a lot of the county is already in middle school and they're acting like it and they have. Yeah, it's really no different than when you come down to the bottom of the house, so.
I think.
Think this is great.
And I would get the expectation there when they get to high school.
Yeah, right, right, I like it.
One final thought, if this does pass, I would encourage. More than one way of communicating this to students and home. Um, you know, I don't know what the options are, but multiple notices, I think, would be really important.
Yep, we we've already had those conversations, already have some plans in place for. We'll definitely be having some class meetings at the school for students and um newsletter, but beyond newsletters for parents as well. Because we do know that sometimes that's not the best way to get it.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmark?
No.
Ms. Lyman?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to a new business. Um. Facilities Subcommittee.
So, um, I've asked um the chair uh i- if she would entertain. Uh, the creation of a facilities subcommittee, I wanna um pause there and say I thank all of you for all the time that you already invest. In the various subcommittees that we have, but I think that this is an important one. I I think it's an important one, uh, you know, the question uh was asked at a previous meeting about um. Having a better understanding about our our grounds, our our buildings, and quite frankly, uh, with the um. The elementary school being over twenty years old, uh, both schools soon to need uh be needing new roofs. Um, it it various complications that that are arising on a pretty regular basis with expenses that go along with that. I think that it would be in the committees and the school community's best interest to have a smaller committee that can uh tackle these concerns as they come up. Uh, and make recommendations to the full committee, so I'm I'm hopeful that we can, we could do this and and. And really get an active group um to talk about the status uh of our buildings and grounds.
I think a motion uh to stand up and approve a facilities subcommittee.
Any discussion? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
We sure can.
All right, um, Costa Rica, correct.
We have, um, I believe in the serials, um, we have a group of teachers proposing a trip in April vacation twenty twenty-five. To Costa Rica, um, I believe you have the details of that uh in your packets. Um, just as a sign of the Costa Rica trip was the was the trip that was supposed to run in twenty twenty when the world shut down. Um, and there is a great deal of interest that appears um in the student body, even though nobody was in this building at the time. Um, in the high school area when that got canceled, so. Um, we would love your consideration and approval, um, so that they can begin the process of registering students. Because the sooner they start, the lower the monthly payments are, um, that families may be up to April twenty twenty. Oh, and included in there, as has been our practice, is the cancel for any use of insurance.
Any discussion? I have a student who's very excited. Brenda, can we have a roll call, please? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have a whole bunch of uh updated policies that we need to go through. These are updated policies, the policies that we have already had created, we're just updating them, they're old. Um, so these are policies.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, what we did was we.
Um, since they are old policies that we are just updating.
Okay, we already did one reading, uh, policy.
This the the subcommittee. This the sub, the subcommittee meeting, because it's an open meeting.
Yep.
Counts as the first read, and they did read through all those policies, so you can waive the second read.
He's waiting, so. Because you're the chair.
Yeah, they have the basically for entry to, you only have to change in the middle of September first, blackout. And uh, sorry.
Um, I motion to approve uh policy J E B entrance stage and to waive the second read.
I second.
Any discussion? Brenda, do a roll call. First made the motion, uh, Nicole being the second. Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Next one is the school district legal aid, we've got the one that's up today.
I motion to accept policy A A, school district legal status and to waive second read.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
And the next one is A D people and their school district, we read the first meeting.
I motion to accept policy A B, the people in their school district, and to waive second read.
I second.
Any discussion? Brenda can do a roll call. Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
The next one that we have is uh policy A C R non-discrimination to harass without a H. We read the first reading and we'll approve.
So I I'll I'll motion to approve policy A C dash R, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation, and wait second reading.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
And one that skipped over, not then, is file A C non-discriminatory, including harassment and retaliation, and spread per green.
I motion to approve policy A C, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation, and to waive second read.
I second.
Any discussion? Brenda can do a roll call. Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Well, the next one is policy A C A, non-discriminatory, on basis of sex, we do the first reading and I will approve.
I motion to approve policy A C A, non-discrimination, on the basis of sex, and to waive the second read.
I second.
Any discussion? Brenda can do a roll call. Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Yeah, the next one off is policy A C A B, sexual harassment policy. We do the first reading and I will approve.
I motion to approve policy A C A B, sexual harassment policy, and to waive second read.
I second.
Any discussion? Brenda can do a roll call. Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
For policy uh A D educational philosophy, the change that we added to the group was adding issues.
I motion to approve policy A D educational philosophy and to waive second read.
I second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yeah.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, the title actually, um, the other change is the title's changed mission statement. So it should be an educational mission statement? Nope.
No.
It's an educational philosophy, it's mission statement.
Okay.
All right, so I'll I'll motion, uh, so no longer, so I motion to accept policy A D, mission statement. At the waiting second read.
I second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call again? Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Langmark?
Yes.
Ms. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right, policy A D C, smoking on school front, they put it as a policy. Uh, we see that after selling the degree a little bit, they're not allowing cigarette, cigar, but with regard to tobacco. Fight without the smell, let's go cigarette, then of both cigars, not a place for others. Other products that rely on vaping on alcoholation.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, it also changed the. It is tobacco products and school premises prohibited. It is tobacco products on school premises prohibited. Tobacco products on school premises prohibited.
Motion to approve policy A T C, tobacco products on school premises prohibited, and to waive the second read.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call? Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Ms. Lingwong?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
I would like firstly, thank the policy committee for all their hard work on this policy. And I would like to thank Brenda for all the hard work on roll calling on that. Um, we have no other thing on the agenda other than our future business, which is January ninth, twenty twenty-four. Would like to wish you all a happy holiday and our viewing public a happy holiday season. And I will take the vote for a moment. So I don't know. Any discussion on adjournment? Can you roll call us out for a minute? Mr. Robbin?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Kishir?
Yes.
Ms. Lingwong?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
We are adjourned at eight twelve.